Muy buenos días nuevamente también el saludo para los que nos están mirando a través de nuestra conexión en streaming. Vamos a continuar nuestra agenda de trabajo con un tema que sin duda alguna tiene mucho que ver con lo que se está realizando hoy en nuestro país anfitrión Cuba. Porque la transformación digital no es un concepto abstracto, es una experiencia viva que se siente en cada rincón ahora mismo de nuestro país. En las universidades que están innovando.
The universities are innovating, the universities are innovating, the young people who are creating and the institutions that are reinventing themselves in order to provide a better service. This is a journey that is full of challenges because the opportunities are inviting us to think out of the box and then embark on a process. Digital transformations just not only changing technologies but also changing the mindsets. And for this purpose, let me extend an invitation to His Excellency Ernesto Rodriguez Hernandez, Senior Vice Minister of Communications from Cuba for the Cuba perspective on this. Thank you very much. Distinguished participants, welcome. It is a pleasure that you are here with us in this special session dedicated to digital transformation in Cuba. This transformation, this discussion is part of the 21st CIGF. It is an honor for us to share with you Cuba's experiences, progress and challenges on her transition to the digital transformation of society. Last year, our country adopted a policy for digital transformation, its implementation digital agenda, as well as the implementation of a strategy for the development and use of AI. We are working towards establishing a society with skills that allow for a critical, humanistic and ethical use of technologies and data. A society with a culture of innovation in a safe environment that contributes to the overall well-being and the attainment of a prosperous and sustainable country. In the course of this session, we will have an opportunity to explore fundamental topics such as data governance, local development and its connection with digital transformation, the role of businesses, academia, civil society and the government in this process. We will have the valuable contribution of outstanding specialists, researchers and authorities from Cuba who will offer us an enriching and profound look at the way these digital technologies are impacting the development of our country. We hope this session will be a great use for our colleagues from the Caribbean countries who are here either in person or virtually to invite you all to use this space for dialogue and exchange of knowledge and the joint construction of solutions that promote technological development with sustainability in their entire region for a Caribbean that will be prosperous and developing. Thank you very much. Thank you Deputy Minister for your call on matters that are critical, not only technically but also for the people. The way in which the people are empowered with these technologies, not only in Cuba and the Caribbean. So we'll start with the first panel, that is data governance, sovereignty, equity, resilience and a term that is being used by the Minister of Regional Solidarity. And for this purpose, let me invite Yarina Morosa Fernandez, who is from the Cuban lawyers. Yarina has been touring Cuba, she has been sharing her knowledge on AI. We will have the other panelists here. There is Omara Aldama Lopez, Director of Info Communications on the Palace of the Revolution. Welcome. Also, Ms. Maria Ested, Alfonso Suarez, VP for the Cuban IT Experts Association. Professor of Havana's Technology University. And like me, Juandez Olcon, Director of Business Intelligence from ETEXA, Cuba's Telecom Company. So we're talking about women's empowerment and evidence of this is shown here. Yarina, you have the floor.
Morning everyone. From the outset, I want to thank the organizers of this event for this invitation to moderate this panel. This panel is very important for, it is also receiving the material support for what was discussed in the previous panel. That is, how can we make sure that the rights are exercised and we can also establish responsibilities? And in particular with the young people and children. And since I'm using the floor, let me just say that more recently Cuba adopted a children's code. A code for the children, teens and young people. And this code establishes digital rights for these age groups and it also supplements. In fact, we recently also adopted a family code which also introduces the element of parental responsibility. And these are critical elements that represent legal support which also need technological support as the country has identified. For these are our basic rules, tools. We have a constitution that was adopted in 2019 that articulates all of these points. And we also have regulations on technologies and information. And these are enabling elements and more recently we adopted a strategy and a digital agenda and a policy for AI. These are important contributions to the Caribbean, the Caribbean, the Minas together. And we need to stand closer together, particularly in the context of CARICOM and other regional agencies for integration. I am flattered to be in this panel with these women who are all empowered. This is a real representation of women's empowerment. And we have also a lot of men who are making contributions in terms of technology and in terms of talent and professionalism. Let me start with Maria Ested, who represents the National Association of IT Experts. So these are our technology experts and Maria Ested is the senior VP of this association. So she will tell us about their way in which her organization is participating in this country's decision to improve its data governance mechanisms. Morning. I've already been introduced. We will discuss the role being played by my association in the digital transformation of our country and in particular, you know, data governance. Now, since its inception, this association has designed a strategy to accompany and support the ecosystem, particularly in the area of internet governance and data governance and other digital technologies for the purpose of managing talents and professionals and facilitate certifications and skills and to all of the members of our association. Our association has more than 8,000 members who are deployed nationwide. And this is a major strength for we can facilitate spaces for discussion nationwide and at all levels. You know, local, provincial, national levels. And we also facilitate the space for capacity building and certification. So we are promoters of innovation and from the society and for the society. We have also become a critical partner to, for the Cuban government as the ruler of public policies. In particular for the policies of innovation, AI and digital transformation. Further to our experience and based on our integration with the academia and that is universities, we have played a critical role in the execution of projects. And in particular, projects are particularly in reference to data. Since from the introduction of internet, you know, the question of data exceeds the natural capacities of individuals in order to use data as a strategic resource for decision-making processes. Therefore, there's need for tools and specialization. And because data are very clear, you know, you have the volume of the data, the speed needed for data processing, the variability of the data, the veracity and diversity of the data. So all of these areas require a structure and specialization and an organization such as so that the data can be of use, it can be productive and can help governments and businesses and individuals and institutions in their decision-making processes. So we are working, we are indeed, we are constantly managing talent. And we are also facilitating skills and competences to assist the government in this project that has been embarked upon. And it will eventually end with a governmental policy on data. Thank you. Thank you, Maria Ested. We have a point here which is the development of human capital. But in the absence of infrastructure, in the absence of responsible management, then these topics have become compromised. Therefore, let me ask the next speaker who is the Business Intelligence Director, Manager for ETEXA. This question that is, what is the role being played by ETEXA in this area of data governance? Thank you for your question. From the outset, let me say a word of thanks and for the invitation to attend this panel. It is an honor for me to be in the company of distinguished professionals. So I am, and I am also happy that I am talking about internet governance with women. So this speaks highly about Cuban women's representation in these areas. I represent Cuba's telecom carrier. I have been working for this organization for 25 years. And I am also, I have a telecommunications background. My department is called Central Division of Business Intelligence. When I introduce myself, when people introduce me, people do not understand the name of my division. And see what happens is that my division, my division deals directly with data governance. We have had interesting sessions here in which we have heard about the fact that internet governance and infrastructure and AI, you know, in all of these areas, the data are present. Let me reaffirm, you know, the role being played by ETEXA in an inclusive data governance and we have a responsibility. And this is a responsibility that we implement jointly as a team so that we can reach out to all of those areas in which, because we still have areas of silence and we all and 86% of our villages, they have connectivity. So this is an element that is cross-cut into all of the topics that have been discussed here. And this is why we need to continue to work to upgrade and modernize our technology base, you know, from our organization, of course. And of course, we regard paid to safety and security. Let me tell you about my experience on data governance. From the viewpoint of my operator, that is since we are a public operator, a public carrier. You know, we focus on our services, but there's also need for digital transformation internally and data governance, you know, within our organization. And there are four points that I wanted to raise here. Because all of us are governing data from our positions. For example, we need to identify the data, that is the data, the data that goes across our organization which represents strategic for decision-making processes. Sometimes when we talk about the response, who owns the responsibility for the data transmission? People say operations or marketing. So this is, so we needed to establish the data and see where the data was located. Another element was security, you know, that is the data must be secured. And we have been working hard on this and of course we, further to the personal data law was passed in Cuba. We have been working on the updating and upgrading our systems. And in particular, you know, human capital, you know, we have been trained, we have been training our human capital base in our organization in order to meet our targets so that data governance becomes a strategic process in our organization. Thank you. So we have heard about human capital, we have heard in a perspective of human capital from the company that supplies technical services. But data governance is not just technical, it is a social approach. Because the data serves us all and help make decisions and for the exercise of rights. And there's something that moves us all, you know, which is sustainable development. And this is partly me ask Omara, who represents the Cuban government here. And she also plays a critical role as Director of Information and Communications. The venue of our Cuban government, that is the Palace of the Revolution. That is, what is your outlook and what has been the progress that we made? And what are the prospects of data governance in support of decision-making processes here? Good morning everyone. Thank you. Thank you for this invitation, you know, to be here with you. The data have become a recurring topic in all of the scenarios where we discuss the progress of technologies and digital governance. You know, the data are always present, you know, further to what has been discussed by the colleagues here. In particular, as Yarina was saying, data governance is not just a technical topic. From a governmental standpoint, it is an indispensable pillar. And its availability helps a better government, that is a more efficient government, a more reliable government. And this is why the data are so important for government operations. The preceding speakers have spoken about decision-making processes, that is to govern. The government means, to govern means to make decisions. And you need to make decisions that are fair and efficient. And in order to do that, we need to have properly governed data. Because you need to govern, you need to govern from evidence rather than intuition. And therefore, we need to manage resources, particularly in our countries where resources are scarce. And therefore, we need to cut costs and we need to save costs. And in a manner that we can also develop our countries and also monitor the performance of our strategic objectives and implement and public policies based on appropriate data sets. And in order to make good decisions, in order to have a good performing government. And we have a good data governance so as to facilitate all of these processes. And the next point is government efficiency. So that is good governance promotes interoperability and the sharing of data amongst different institutions. And once you can be successful in this, then the public and the government-to-government processes as well as the relations between the government and individuals are carried out better. And we have processes in Cuba, examples in Cuba. They say, for example, we have a new website which is called Sovetania Sovereignty, which allows for the interoperability of data among different institutions. We also have, we have another organization that has been doing a fine job in terms of promoting local development. And these are two success stories that can be examples of this. So governing with support of good data means governing better, you know, because good governance helps them make good decisions and meet the government's objectives as public servants, which is to satisfy the needs of our public or our society. Thank you, Omara. We are, we are discussing the development, development and improvement of our rules and regulations. We have a law on the protection of personal data. We have a law on the access of information and transparency. And since we are, and if we can add to this infrastructure and human capital, then we will be able to meet our targets in terms of sustainable, sustainable socioeconomic development. And there is an ingredient that is missing here which is innovation. That is how we can get the best from what we have, you know, at the shortest period of time. And so we need to generate value in this. So let me ask Tatiana, Tatiana is a professor from our Havana Technology University, which is called Cuja in Spanish. And she's also the VP of the Cuban Association of IT Experts. And that is, so what is the importance that is being attached to innovation in the data governance?
Thanks, Yarina. And we would like to thank all of the organizers for allowing us to be here. I would like to speak about this data governance to be able to focus on open data because of the importance of data for innovation. So with innovation, we can make artificial intelligence. We can also do entrepreneurial business information. And this is a common asset that we generate together with organizations that might be available so that can be used in the best possible way in an ethical position, ethical position. And I would like to speak about four perspectives related to this open data governance. First, as Yarina said, in a legal framework, it is true that there is a data protection policy and transparency. But we also need to have a comprehensive law on open data, enabling us to have licenses as well as using the information ethic and also inclusiveness, including people. And also how to be able to fund, to finance all that data to be used with the people, by the people. Because people is the ones you work for, but also to be used by our institutions and to create values as Yarina said. Secondly, and it's also important, and we have the Deputy Minister here, Aiden, who has been working in interoperability. It's important to have rules of technical interoperability, both with data information. It doesn't mean that we have to work all of us the same way. All institutions might have different modules and different patterns. But we need to have standards to be able to get together, to work together with other institutions. And also to have libraries to be able to be used. Those are important matters to consider. I would like to highlight something because in this short presentation of mine, I would like to speak about some examples that happen in Cuba. The space infrastructure data that used to be more, I mean, closer to the legal framework, to collaboration. But today we have to see that thanks to Heokuba and some other entities, we have space, that infrastructure that publish data with international standards and also with the standards established domestically. And they deal with agriculture, with sugar ministry, with civil defense to reduce disasters and the impact of natural disasters. And we have to work a lot and we apply that. We are not so far of that interoperability. So we have to visualize those experiences. A third issue is related to the technological infrastructure. Our colleague from ETEXA, she has been very accurate in explaining as the need to have an infrastructure of communications. But we also need technological infrastructure to democratize the access to data for instance, services platforms. And just speaking about ETEXA, I would like to mention something which is a service platform for the Internet of Things. But those services are used not only to manage in a compound way the data of the Internet of Things. We can also manage information from any heterogeneous source of data as well as the standards. Those are technical policies that we need. And we still need also to have semantic all these issues, the ecosystems of innovation. I also have my veteran colleagues, highly experienced colleagues on this topic. Because without innovation, we cannot create public values. So it's very important to open cooperation. And there is a good example of informatic people which are the innovation and digital transformation laboratories, which are called in Cuba COLAB. But they are in five provinces and we are planning to take, to open much more labs of this kind in the country. And this kind of development is included in the 2030 development agenda. So it's important to have a database. And we need four main elements, access and use of data. Access because we need to have a democratized system of data. Access, because we need to have a democratized system of data, we need to facilitate access. We can have a lot of countries that have data portals totally open, but we never know when those are used. So it's per se, it does not create values, you have to foster that. Second thing I would like to mention is the digital ecosystem, and for me, the most important thing is collaboration. Collaboration between all those stakeholders, thank you very much. Thanks, Tatiana, that has been giving us perspective, and I believe out of the issues tackled in this panel, we see that we need a balance between the use of data and the responsibility to protect that information, it's not the protection per se, but the responsibility to protect in the hands of everyone that have information. People have to protect their own data, entities have to protect their information and others' information, so we cannot sacrifice the development of society. Because we also need to protect those, that information, so that is our responsibility. So in these regards, we might be taking hours to talk about this, so we have tackled all these issues. So I would like to ask all panel members to stop for them to give me one of the challenges on how to deal with data in Cuba, please, one word, just short phrase for that. I'm gonna tell you two words, surveillance of data productivity. From the viewpoint of the operator, I would like to say interoperability. It's a word that puts together the role that we played in issues associated to governance of data. I might say, if my chief, Wilfredo, allows me, that I would like to take the name of the portal, Sovereignty and Trust. And I was afraid that my word might be used in advance, but I'm gonna say something which is disruptive. Hackathon, hackathon, because it's a marathon of hackers. Many people are persecuting, going after data. Any question, anyone would like to ask questions, want to questions? So let's take the photo. The traditional photo of the panel, at the beginning, I was saying, I was very grateful for the perspective of the panel. But most of all, I would like to thank the passion these women have for what they advocate for. Thank you very much, I say that as something that also is comes from social sciences. There is a vision, dialogic, ecosystemic and humanistic link with other sciences, or something we need to be focused on human beings, in people, in individuals. We have a lot of talent that might be using this data with sovereignty and intelligence. Now we go to panel number two, and to understand how this digital transformation from local development can impact. To speak about these benefits, we have to speak about digital infrastructure, development of capacities, data framework and cybersecurity. And also the promotion of community, public and private policies. That's why, this is the reason why we have this panel. The moderator shall be Jorge Núñez Hober, professor of the University of Havana, and a advisor to the National Innovation Council, and as advisor to the Minister of Science, Technology and Environment. It's a total honor to have him here. We shall also have members of panel who are Aurora Fernández González, advisor to CNI, and the Minister of Higher Education, and also coordinator of the university network for the management and knowledge of and innovation for local development. Thanks to the lady, Dariel de León García, senior researcher in the Local Development Center, technical director of Sustainable Programs in Municipalities. With Alan Piérez Raconde, advisor to Science, Technology and Innovation in the Ministry of Higher Education. And Denis Buedo Idalgo, informatization director of the Ministry of Higher Education in charge of digital transformation. So the gentleman is not here, but anyways, we have a very, a panel with outstanding personalities, thank you very much. Good afternoon. Our panel are going to be focused on the relation between the territorial development and digital development. So this is a different panel, but who would like to highlight two things. So we have less women in this area, but we have one that is extraordinary woman, so round of applause for her. And on the other side, the, these women are experts on digital transformation. And women are just users of this digital transformation. And also, we have to focus on this territorial development and innovation. And we want that higher education, universities, educational centers mobilize all the capacities to promote this union between territorial development and digital transformation. So this, we are going to focus on these issues. And we are interested in boosting digital transformation in the favor of territorial development. And this means that we have to develop the well-being of the people that lives in these territories. So when we think about this, we have to keep into account these issues. So maybe there are differences related to digital transformation, and this is challenging and difficult to find an union between these two concepts. They both comprises deep digital changes, and also cultural changes, and these are complex concepts. If we take into account the areas and the benefit of our people. That is why we have this panel to make some comments on these topics. And we want to introduce you what all these speakers, what are the things that all these speakers do? Aurora, as she was introduced, she has important positions in different areas. She's going to be in charge of speaking about the relation between digital transformation and territorial development on public policies, and the efforts we have to make to unite them. In the case of Dariel, Dariel has an interesting program that is called Municipios Sostenibles. This program has to mobilize digital transformation to move forward and get that these municipalities become sustainable municipalities for prosperity as well. And this implies digital transformation, and I asked him to tell us how, what are the works he's making to move forward in these municipalities to create capacities, management capacities. So public management can improve in relation to the data management. So this would be the things he is going to talk about. He's an engineer, a professor, a researcher. In the case of Alan Piérez, he is an expert on issues of technology, science and innovation. He works at the Ministry of Higher Education, and he's going to talk about these topics focused on the role of Ministry of Higher Education, the in relation to the digital transformation and territorial development. So these are our speakers, and now we appreciate the organizers to give us this space, thank you very much. Good morning. As Jorge was saying, it's a pleasure to be here to talk about this topic. And this allows us to make a clear-cut explanation on the importance of the well-being of our population in relation to digital transformation. So it has to be more efficient and effective at the territorial and national level. The local development has become a public policy of great importance for our country mainly since 2017. It was the first time that we have line guides that highlight the necessity to create and establish municipalities at the main center. These line guides allow that the Cuban constitution that was newly approved. So we introduced two articles highlighting the importance of local development. The importance of the municipality with its concepts, and the importance of municipality development. So mainly, maybe people of other countries do not understand this, Cuba was centralized. We have making some efforts to improve governance, taking into account these popular councils. After in 2020, the policy to boost local development was approved. So we have to develop these ideas that were present in the Cuban constitution and provide definitions on how a municipality should work, how a province should work, how this local development should take place to carry out this governance. These policies that were passed in 2020 were So it was related to the strategies of local development, and it was supported by different decree laws at the level of popular councils and provinces. Despite that, we have these, all these supports, it hasn't been an easy process, we all know this. There are difficulties and challenges to decentralize competences from organizations, territories, and this is why digital transformation is important, that it can contribute, that this process can be more efficient. The National Council for Innovation for Technology and Innovation has carried out different processes in different years. And in January 2024, the National Council for Innovation, it passed these digital transformation policies. So in 2024, an agreement was passed to carry out all these policies in relation to the Council of Ministers. And also the minister, our minister presented these policies in relation to the strategies and the use of AI. These policies was born with different aspects that relate them to territorial development. But in this case, we have to make reference of this. And it has been presented in this digital agenda on how we can implement these policies on the territories. It's a pleasure that Yarina Moroso is here because she knows a lot of things about these topics. So it has developed this in five provinces. Pinal del Rio, for example, Camahue, so we have nurtured this in different fora. They have made publications on how digital transformation is nurturing the development of our municipalities. So there are a lot of things, and we need the participation of the citizens, popular consultation. The population must know what it is going to be digitalized, what projects needs to be developed in the communities. So we need integration, so it is going to be a very innovative process, it is a combination of both concepts. We have to take into account server security topics, analyze the social process, and also have we have to develop capacities in the population, so they are able to assimilate these new approaches and to implement them, that is why universities are important. And they are extended around municipalities, so they play an essential role. And universities have to carry out this process to move forward in digital transformation for the benefit of our population, thank you very much. Good morning, I'm more than pleased to be, to be in this panel. Because as I said at the beginning, I'm from Matanzas. So Sustainable Municipality is a program that in Cuba has been assimilated and implemented as a program. Program of cooperation financed by the European Union, and part by the government of Italy, as well by track funds from UNDP. This adds more than 30 million euros, which are implemented in eight Cuban municipalities in the eastern, I mean, the western and the center sites of the island. The formal name is Program for the Ecological Transition to Sustainable Municipalities in Cuba. So the result we are planning to have is to achieve sustainability and some lessons learned about municipal management through ecological transition. We have interpreted that in Cuba with two main policies related to food and energy. And those are the two main pillars of these sustainable municipality programs, and the third one is referred to the two ones. The first two objectives are the agricultural and industrial development. Issues to be distributed in the municipality away from provincial or national analyses. Structured in a vision of values change, considering what the food, safety and sovereignty policies are established in our country. Secondly, we have the promotion of energy sustainable entities, and we have sustainable and self-supplied areas. And in those municipalities, we also have the contribution of strategies and municipal planning trying to use the endogenous and energy resources in the country. Not only thinking about electrification, but also with municipal electricity services. And we have something important for these purposes by using heat and some other energy sources. We have a pillar in these areas, and the most important thing is not only what we can have from a tangible viewpoint or what we can transform. Cooperation is not to solve the gaps or the pending issues, there is an impact and there are specific actions to be deployed. But there is also a distance from the rest of 161 municipalities of the country. The most important thing is the lessons we can learn. There is a mission, there is a mission, and this is the third pillar of Sustainable Municipality Program. I mean, the role of the management and governance in municipalities with the
I mean, the role of the management and governance in municipalities with the participation. In these three main purposes, digital transformation or digital informatization in society is fundamental because this is something that accelerates what we want to achieve. And it's also a way to accelerate for learning from the pilot projects we are implementing. There are difficult things to be implemented in these two fields. But there are also some other important matters that are also relevant because going to leave, to speak about the capacity for development when we can replicate in other municipalities. I was listening before to the panel with the beautiful women that was before ours. And they were talking about the need to work together. We need to work together to have specialized forces to achieve the purposes we have and the way to informatize municipalities in these fundamental processes in issues related to perfection of agricultural and industrial sector where we have the need to add values. And taking digital services might be important or is important in the areas of consumption, in the areas of agriculture for the transformation of different matters which are analyzed. And we need to analyze as well management control. There, we need to understand public services in the municipalities with this objective to make perfect public management, but also to be able to promote participation of institutions and also participation of civil society and participation of the whole people, the whole population, considering everything that is included in law with the participation of different sectors in the economic activities of the country. So those are fundamental matters. Transition and digital transformation is a way to accelerate what sustainable municipality project want to show. And this is one of the objectives as an indicator in which is done in municipalities. In Cuba, this is a project that we consider a whole program. And it is mentioned in Article 169 in the Constitution about the autonomous nature of the municipalities. We in Cuba have considered this project as a program because in each municipality is not a center of intervention. Each municipality in this case is a project. So we have eight municipal projects from Isle of Youth, Huana Bacoa Municipality, Manicaragua Municipality, Martí, Remedios, Trinidad, Caballuan and Jaguahai. Those are the eight municipalities which are part of our program. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I would like to appreciate the organizing committee for this opportunity. First, taking into account the topic of the panel, I would like to make some comments on one Aurora had said, that is the link between the digital transformation policy and the policy regarding territorial development. These two policies that Aurora made reference to are related to a third policy that is related to the policy in relation to science, technology and innovation that was passed in 2019. It is related also to different decree laws and resolutions of the Ministry of Science, Technology and Environment, that we are about to pass a law on technology, science and innovation. This is a policy that has been working at the country level. In that way, we would like to see how we can articulate these three public policies. First, I would like to highlight that digital transformation as we know it is not only about a technological topic, but it is related to other topics that preceded it. But it is putting the citizenship at the center of these problems and makes nearer the population to the issue of local development in which everybody participates and it is innovative. And it is led by local governments that is looking for the interaction between all the actors to manage these development strategies. And digital transformation is the framework, conceptual framework, to take advantage of digital tools at the benefit of the local development. The nature of all these policies is through the governmental system that is based on science and innovation that was developed by the presidency of our republic. And it is putting innovation at the center at all levels, the central levels and at the municipality level. That is why it is important that CTI capacities and digital transformation and local development are mixed, taking into account municipality policy, municipality development policies. And these capacities are the driving engine for digital transformation for the benefit of local development. We can see this in the eight different key points that make up the digital transformation strategy. In these eight key point, we can see that there is an interaction of the CTI capacities at the benefit of local development. For example, in the first key point, so the creation of legal instrument is encouraged to provide this at the municipality level. So they have a better autonomy and they simplify all this paperwork of the citizens. And new models, new business models and technological solutions are developed. For example, TransferMobil and Enzona, and it is encouraging local development. Also the digital government, different e-platforms are developed and they digitalize different procedures. So it is boosting the efficiency and the transparency and the governance at the municipality level. So this analysis was carried out in the eight key points. And we can see the interaction, technology capacities, encouraging digital transformation and generating development in the municipality. And these eight key points show how through CTI capacities, we can boost digital transformation. And we have benefits for every citizenship, citizen and every territory. There is an important actor in this area. They are the universities and the university centers at the municipalities. These are strategic centers to contribute and transform at the benefit of local development. There are different aspects. For example, in relation to the human resource trainings, universities are in charge of the comprehensive trainings in computer sciences. Then provide competences through postgraduate courses. While university centers at the municipality, they train directors, officials and also the population in relation to innovation and digital competences. For example, is the project that is sponsored by an agency that resides in Spain that is strengthening institutional capacities for digital transformation in higher education. And it has trained more than 200 professionals in 14 provinces. Also, knowledge development, universities are important centers for research and development in strategic sectors. And it is encouraging research on social sciences. These programs encourage innovation and identify the problems of the territory and try to solve them. For example, Observatorio Agrocológico that was developed by the University of Pinal de Río with FAO and the Ministry of Agriculture that is providing data and analysis in relation to food policymaking process and implementation of different laws. This shows how innovative capacity at the universities and digital transformation are applied directly to solve social problems in relation to local development, for example, security, food security. Also, these courses are important for local development. And people can participate in these labs for digital transformation that are all over the country, sponsored by the Union of Computer Science Specialists of Cuba. And I would like to say in relation to local development and is that the experience of the articulated platform for local development and territorial development. And a group drafted different indicators for local and municipality development. And we can see different examples that are not only related to the national platforms and provide solutions, but there are projects at the local level and the municipality level and solve small problems. For example, different registers at the local level to facilitate all the paperwork for families. So these are examples on how small problems at the local level should be solved at the local level with their resources. And also they have an effect on the quality of life of the population. And also they provide solutions that goes beyond municipalities. And I have to say that CTI is boosting digital transformation at the benefit of local development. CTI and digital transformation are boosting local development. And in this case, universities and comms are facilitators of this architecture that goes with these three policies I mentioned. Thank you very much.
Now this is the presentation. I don't know if we have time for to have some questions or comments from the audience. But we remain available to you all for any questions or comments. Any questions or any comments? Well, if not, let me once again thank the panelists. After these interventions, we can be certain about two things. First, the road to digital transformation for local development is very clear. And secondly, there will be a lot of effort needed in terms of regulation and in terms of capacity building. Huge efforts will be required in order to meet our purpose, but we have to do this because that will represent benefits for our people and our society. Let me thank my panelists and the organizers for this invitation. Thank you very much. I want to thank you and the panelists. And if you can please stand for the follow-up. Thank you. Let us give it up for the panelists. So we have heard about the experiences and projects that have been implemented in our communities. You know, there are experts here. And some experts indicate that development stems from the local level and ends at the local level. And there are two points that are critical here. We don't want this development to represent local well-being. And so our session continues to be open. And then let me invite you now for lunch. And then when we come back, we will continue with our session on Cuba's digital transformation. Use your time to socialize and take pictures together and to hug you all and see you in a while.
Muy buenas tardes. Estamos de vuelta en nuestra sesión despertiva.
Good afternoon. We are back and we are enjoying our stays here. The last few moments we have here in Baradero, the beach and the sand and the warmth of the Caribbean and our land. So I'm just breaking away a little bit from protocol. Let us proceed with our session on the digital transformation in Cuba. We'll continue to hear more experiences. We will now listen to companies and institutions and the governments. Let me introduce the third panel, companies in digital transformation. Ernesto Valimartinez, Director of IT from the Ministry of Communications. And Ernesto will be the moderator. Also with us, Denis Merillo Mena, the president of Z17. Mr. Artur L. Díaz García, General Manager, Softel. And Mr. Júdovia Almeida Cruz, Professor and Researcher, University of Havana. From their perspectives, they will show you the Cuban companies transitioning to a more solid digital future. Good afternoon. This time of the day is always very cozy. But this is a topic of great interest to everyone because our area sees the implementation of all of the policies and the satisfaction of all of the public needs. Since the 1960s, Cuba began to build capacities in the form of new engineers to solve problems. And in the 21st century, there was an interesting phenomenon in Cuba. A specific university was set up here to teach IT. And that is the University to teach IT and that is the University of Information Technology that this university has given, has formed engineers who have helped Cuba transition to a digital society and a number of solutions have been produced from there. And so we wanted to show you some more examples from the IT university in Cuba. And of course, we will also be discussing other IT companies and tech companies existing in Cuba and their ability to replay, ability to generate solutions that are now only available to multinationals to which Cuba has no access. I have with me Denis, who is the general manager of Z seventeen. That company was established under the University of IT, which is existing in our Havana's technology park and it is a separate company and it has partnered with the Texas and it has been it is playing a very important role. Adulit is the general manager of Softel, which is a a software and developing company that supplies services to the Cuban healthcare service, healthcare sector and it was established in the eighties and it was the first company that set up shop at the University of IT in response to a call from the president of Cuba. And then we also have a professor from the School of Mathematics and Computers under the University of Havana. And he will also discuss, you know, the development of additional capacities to address the challenges being posed by life. So we have, we have a small video presentation from Z seventeen. This video presentation shows you where we are. An opportunity to create a new content, upload videos or to have a live variety of audiovisual materials. So you can see, you can see the Cuban TV live on streaming. So don't download www.pictup.eu. Picta has everything. Denis, you have a photograph for the team or the team that, you know, that generated this presentation. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for the invitation to be in attendance of this panel. Z seventeen is Cuba's number one spin-off company that was established out of the IT university, which was set up in an incubation park, which is the a park, the scientific park of Savannah, and it has three major applications originally. There is Ol Piti Capicaris. This is a company is looking for technology sovereignty, you know. And we are supporting communications, entertainment and streaming services. And we also have a virtual shop, you know, using Android technology and and in that way we can, you know, overcome certain limitations that Cuba may have. As you are aware, a number of applications, a lot of applications that are not authorized, you know, for Cuba. Therefore, we have developed our in-house applications. So the software developers in our company have this mission to continue to to continue to position, you know, these three platforms in the Cuban context. Z seventeen supplies a number of services, including IT applications and streaming services, video streaming, you know, for example. This event is being broadcast live, you know, thanks to our team that is present here. We also generate audiovisual content and and we also market comprehensive technology solutions, which may include hardware. One of the main contributions from these platforms of the region is that, for example, the Picta platform generated by this company helps support, you know, the sale of audiovisual materials that are part of our culture. It is important that we go beyond the existing colonizing patterns in the internet so that we can transmit and convey our values to. So we have this capacity, you know, to give a space to other companies existing in our region. Picta is a platform that already has a close to one million Cuban users. And in fact, even users from outside Cuba could also access, you know, this platform by relying on email and and in the case of Cuba, just use a cellphone number, you know, we have a number of contents, educational, social, medical and entertainment and sport. And we also have, we also promote live video streaming and we also supply, you know, news on different sectors of society. We also, our business model helps pay, you know, the content generators that nurture this platform. We also transmit radio and TV programs live and so Picta has been expanding and we have established partnerships with major content developers in our country, including RTV Comercial, the Cuban broadcasting service. And a number of other projects have been implemented with artists and audiovisual producers that are uploading their productions, you know, in Picta. So we are looking forward to significant growth and we have been entering into different innovative ways to transmit Cuban and foreign content that can be enjoyed from this platform, of course. And you can subscribe to it in different forms and the platform has all their benefits. And on its subscription plans, the platform also brings on board Cuban artists and radio producers that are promoting Cuban art in the world. Now, how can we position the Caribbean region, you know, through in Picta? And we can do that by by uploading your information. You can come to us and and it is possible therefore. And together we can grow, you know, with Picta platform as we promote, you know, our region's cultural content and we have we have this opportunity now with our platform and our partnership with the Texas so that we can reach out to the Cuban market and Cuban market and broadcast the Cuban culture and so we have the creators who can market their products here. And I'm referring not only to engineers, but also we also have producers of leisure content that can also join this platform and another sector in that is has been flagship sector in Cuba is healthcare and we have major challenges there, but we are addressing these challenges there, you know. And before we started this conversation, we were talking about this and Adulit perhaps can, how Softel his company has grown and and its services available to Cuba and the region. Good afternoon and thank you for the invitation. Softel has been in operation for thirty nine years. It has several lines of R and D, that is digital signatures and business management. But in there, but and for the last thirty nine years, we have been working with the Cuban healthcare sector, you know, that has been the that has been our primary corporate object, that is, you know, partnership with the healthcare sector and and more than one hundred Cuban healthcare organizations are operating, you know, IT systems that have either partially or fully automated the healthcare services thanks to us and we also work. We are also promoting the digital transformation with the Ministry of Communications as well, you know, we are we are working on designing a system of information for healthcare and its scope is, its scope is more, you know, the policy, you know, since there are several institutions and several information technology tools for healthcare, you know, there is need for interoperability, you know, for for better healthcare governance, a better care. I am referring in particular to the care. So we have, we have a project here. We have a project here in order to reach out to the centralized medical, individual medical records so that an individual is treated in an institution and that is his medical, then the individual can be treated in any other institution in Cuba and then that doctor may have a capacity to access this individual's medical history. That is, therefore, you know, the care, the care provider can provide, you know, better, you know, diagnosis of the patient by having access to his patient's clinical history. So there is a digital transformation in progress, you know. Yeah, and and our next step is to take this nationwide. And we are also working on a number of policies. As was discussed in the panel with the ladies, these policies are necessary in order to organize, you know, all of the information that is available and statistics available from our world and in foreign institutions, but we need to organize the data so that the information and the statistics can be made available centrally. And this is the the project we have embarked upon now. Another project that may have a strong impact in the short term is electromedicine. You see, electromedicine project, we are using our existing ICT capacities and so that services can be made available to specialists who may be in a distant province, may have an opportunity to to consult with a specialist from another province in Cuba or even consult with doctors outside Cuba. That is, we are dealing with other, we have partnering with other companies, you know, in the area of healthcare and technology, that is, we are using electromedicine in order to provide care to foreign countries. And of course, we are thinking of our region, you know, the Caribbean. The Caribbean has a shortage of specialists in specific areas and Cuba has developed, you know, manpower in some areas. So, so, and so Cuban doctor, we have many Cuban doctors with high levels of specialization and this specialization can be made available to our region through this electromedicine project, you know. As we are aware, Cuba has made a significant contribution to healthcare in the region through its cooperation workers. And this is another way in which Cuba can reach out to our region and beyond. These are, you know, some of the points that, some of the areas in which we could have a a positive impact, not only on Cuba, but also our region. And this is the digital transformation that we are seeking, that is to rely on ICTs to improve healthcare, which is the sector a company has focused on. And the electromagnetic services is very, is widely used, particularly in the wake of the pandemic. So and this is an effort that involved not only Softel and other companies, including the University of IT, you know, and and the result, results of these projects have been presented in a number of healthcare trade shows and we are ready to support our region in this respect, just like these solutions that have been designed, you know, for our healthcare services. Most of the applications used in e-government are developed by national entities and this speak, this is a testament to the level of training that has been attained over the years of the Cuban revolution and and in this new context in which we have a new challenge coming from AI. We are also relying on prestigious professionals who are internationally reputed and and we are designing solutions here using AI, you know, in different sectors of our economy. There is mention, there is one that is associated with our indigenous values and and let me invite Judy Vian, who is an expert in this area of AI. Thank you for the invitation. Just a few comments to start off. And we had some of our R and D team members here who had discussed a little bit about this. And there is a, the AI, you know, will definitely change the way we do things. Just to give an idea, it is estimated that fifty percent of the interactions of the children will occur with AI. So there's a cultural battle that is being waged, you know, it's a battle for the cultural colonization. So our project is technologically based, but it is also a tool against cultural colonization. It is a a tool to promote our culture. When we think of the languages and models that underlie, you know, the and the different applications, we have a model. It's not just a matter of using our modern tongue, you know, because the way in which we use the modern tongue also codifies concepts and cultural expressions. We're also coding identities. And this is being trained with in contests, which are not ours. So we are coding expressions and linguistic forms that are not our own. So if we are not involved in this directly, then we are being faced with cultural colonization. So this is the idea behind our project called Cecilia, that is, we can have a a tool, an in-house tool that can be used to to transition to digital transformation and defend the Cuban identity and and this is our AI group. So next, first time when we heard about AI in Latin America, reference was made to the University of Havana and we have Mr. Macias, who is the father of AI in Cuba. He wrote the first article on AI in Cuba and he's close to ninety years of age, but he's still, you know, teaching, you know, and so Cecilia is a Cuban language model in which we are using Cuban texts. And in this way, we are building a language model which is small and modest, but it is a country project. I have just come back from a meeting in which we were imparting lectures on AI and one, another feature of this project is that it is not a project from the academia. It is a project that also arises from the industry and AI models have different faces, you know. You've, um, and there is in which, a second phase is in which that, uh, you know, the model learns how to summarize and interact. And, and we cannot do that ourselves on our own because we don't know how people speak in Santiago and Guantanamo come away. But our idea is for the first time, we are trying to collectively build a project through collective participation of all of the actors in society, from the individual to the institutions. And we are just not only teaching how to use these models. Another interesting point is how this model, this language model was originally designed. Uh, it started with the leadership from the University of Havana, but private companies, Cuban private companies were involved. We also had international cooperation that gave us infrastructure to prepare this model. But that, and the University of Havana supplied Cuban professionals. So, so how can we use all of these synergies? That is by relying on Cuban graduates, some of which are not even in Cuba, who can make a contribution to the Cuban society. And for the first time, we have a tool that we can, need to continue to develop that can be used as a differentiating element in our battle. Because when we talk about these contents, we always say that this is a, a cultural pro- a cultural project. It is a tool that in our opinion should be a country project. There are other similar developments and we are, you know, generating synergies. That is how to build knowledge and how to generate, um, so the data, you know, to satisfy specific needs, you know. So we need to improve, uh, the number of data and, uh, so it's just us, all of this is part of Cecilia, you know. So which is a constructive block, you know, because the language models is not just this, uh, uh, logical application to interact. They are just, uh, they are also, you know, uh, brains that are behind the development of many applications. And these applications will be developed by the industry and by Softail. And, uh, and they, and they will be, you know, in the link, different languages. And you see, we want our audience to use a homegrown tools, you know. And this are not, this Cecilia will not be the only tool, you know, and, uh, no privacy, the data privacy is another important point. When we, when we use these tools, we are sending out data outside our country and, uh, and people will use these data, you know, and, uh, so if we have a, an in-house, uh, development which is adjusted to our infrastructure, we can also have local developments with data protection. So this is the idea behind this project that we have been running for some time now, you know. It was first introduced, uh, May the twenty ninth, uh, at the University of Havana and we are presenting it today. Thank you, Judi Vian. The proposal from here is clear, you know, we have, uh, obvious capacities in our audience, uh, in our audience, both in person and virtually. There are English speakers and, uh, and we find, uh, um, you know, also wealth in the region, you know, in terms of language, not only Spanish and also English and French, you know, and that culture can be further boosted, you know, by relying on the homegrown, uh, and developments which depart from foreign models. And at the same time, we can make a contribution to growth and development. This is just, uh, uh, a sample of the different activities being carried out in Cuba. Let me thank you all for your patience and patience and the panelists for their presentations. May I have, may I ask a question?
Thank you. Good, good afternoon. Um, I just wanted to, I couldn't let the, um, panel conclude without extending my congratulations on the work, excellent work that is being done here in Cuba in telemedicine. Uh, so I'm aware of the cooperation between Cuba and the rest of the Caribbean and the world in terms of, uh, med- medicine. And, uh, I wanted to suggest and propose now that the minister is here that we work towards maybe the signing of an MOU to promote telemedicine within the Caribbean, uh, working with Cuba and the excellent facilities that you have here. So, um, maybe we missed the opportunity here, but hearing it now, maybe next year at the Informatico or maybe a Caricom heads of, heads of government meeting that we work along with CTU Government of Cuba. There's also, uh, another Caricom agency called the Carri- um, Caribbean Public Health Agency, CARFA, that we work closely with. And I, I want to propose that out of this discussion, that we take action in terms of promoting telemedicine within the Caribbean. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll keep in contact and it will be a pleasure to, you know, to work with electro medicine, you guys. Let us, I'll give it up for our panelists, please. The panelists are asked to rise, you know, for the official, uh, a follow-up. Thank you. Let's put our hands together for them. These topics are all, are critical, not only for the Caribbean and the planet. There's a civilizational change occurring. And therefore, we are being classified by generations. And in this room, we have all sorts of generation from the silent generation of nineteen forty-five and the, all the way to beta generation, well, the twenty twenty-five, which is not in this room. But this is the regeneration that was born with AI and this is a change in everything. Just, uh, it has an impact on what we will do in our next panel. The, the point is the government and the role of government in digital transformation. The moderator here is, uh, is a person who coined the phrase, uh, phrase for, in this event, which is ever onward to, uh, digital victory. And that is Eileen Fabliz, Deputy Minister of Communications and Speaker, here will be. Anaissa Hernandez, VP from the Cuban IT Expert Association. Dr. Neymar Cepeda Perez, Professor from the, um, Havana's Technological School of Technology. Mr. Wilfredo Gonzalez Fidal, then a coordinator of the Projects of Iranian, uh, which is from the Center of Digital Governance. And then the Mr. Ernesto Rodriguez, but, oh, he's not here. So they will be, uh, presenting this panel in which they will discuss the, the roads being charted from the previous public institutions so that digital transformation will not be a purpose only, but a reality in Cuba. Thank you. Let me thank this forum and the organizers for the opportunity to share Cuba's experience in the digital transformation. We have had a policy in place, you know, for one year now. As was mentioned in the previous panel discussions, you know, Cuba has always allocated energy and capa- capacity and intelligence to digital transformation. Since the triumph of the Cuban revolution, our country has been relying on the use of technology and the benefit, the benefit of our people. All the panelists have already been, uh, introduced and we have a major challenge, you know, that is that digital transformation is not just a matter of technology. It involves a lot of ene- elements such as sovereignty and, uh, social inclusiveness and social development and that also focus on, let me just share with you, uh, the Cuban experience, not as an isolated model, but just we want to share with you our lessons learned. And so that we can perhaps generate a case study out of it and so that we can understand the challenges. And we can also explore some opportunities for cooperation with you so that, um, in the area of digital transformation from a government perspective. As Daidon was saying, I have, I have in the panel, three representatives of the different stakeholders of digital transformation that is academia, the civil society and the government. That is, we will be discussing digital transformation from these three perspectives. And from, in order to start, let me invite, uh, the gentleman and I'll be breaking certain rules here and then we invite the gentleman, Wilfredo. And the question is, what do you think is the most important intervention by the Cuban government and state as a driver of such a far-reaching transformation, which is digital transformation? Will it be infrastructure? Will it be the ethical framework? Or will it be, um, capacity building in the public? And what have been Cuba's experiences in these areas?
Well, what I thought they- Well, good afternoon. Would like to, um, thank the Deputy Minister for this opportunity and the privilege of being accompanying so beautiful ladies here and with so much experience in this process of the Cuban digital transformation. The question posed is a little bit complex to answer because indeed, there are different areas that are the main activities in terms of the digital transformation policies in Cuba. And especially a policy that was approved in May last year, there are eight axes of work. To, um, somehow, um, highlight one axis above the others is, um, not relevant. I believe that all of them have a purpose. The legal point of view, the establishment of the, uh, digital content and the internet environment in Cuba, all of them are important. And obviously, there is an across-the-board impact. The issues of innovation, uh, um, awareness raising, cybersecurity. But since you asked me for one, or about one of these axes, I will mention the digital govern- government, digital government, that is axis number five of the policy. I will bring to the table two arguments that can answer this question. The first is that the digital government and its concept is very much connected in Cuba to the concept that we have adopted in terms of the digital transformation. Because yes, indeed, it is not just a technological shift. It has already been mentioned, but is a rather cultural process. And carrying out a cultural process, you have to take the persons as the center. You are talking about the well-being of persons, you're talking about the efficacy and efficiency in public administration. And it is a fundamental change. And if you bring this, uh, process or work in this process properly, there is going to be a shift in the, uh, public management of the country. Obviously, this digital, uh, government area is one of the axes that will have an important impact in the push towards a digital transformation in Cuba. There are three main topics that I wanted to mention here. First is the very process of fostering the, uh, access from the, uh, cultural, uh, change. How to make it possible for public officials to, um, be aware of the impact of digital technologies in their way of doing their job as public servants. It is not just the technology, technologies solve the problems, but they are not self-serving. They are there as tools to accompany other processes. And the cultural, um, impact is significant. There are examples here, the very Ministry of Communications is present in, in part of this, um, interpretation of the re- uh, redefining the processes being, uh, of the center on the citizen's life. The other thing is to simplify administrative processes. There has been, um, sort of a groundwork in place. One of them has to do with the digital identity, which is necessary not just for a general governance, but also to make the processes more efficient, to better use data. And the other thing is, um, the issue of interoperability. The capacity, the ability as a country to share data, to share those, uh, data in a secure way and to prevent the duplication of these efforts. And another example is to offer and foster national or domestic services that can solve problems. We believe that we must move from a model of a centralized management, a decentralized government and have a more, um, citizen-driven model where the citizen can actually be a player. It is not just a technological matter, but rather a cultural approach. Summarizing, the digital government may have an important impact in the digital transformation from a broader perspective, knowing what we have today and where we want to get so that we can actually change the paradigm. And we cannot do this on our own. There needs to be the input of the different stakeholders, the private, private state-run sector. And this will lead us, um, will lead us to better results. Well, Wilfredo just finished his presentation talking about the persons. And we would like to ask PhD Nisa, very much in connection to the role of civil society in Cuba in their, um, actions in the transformations that we are driving in Cuba. How is the citizen getting hold of these new opportunities and tools in the digital world? And what are the most important gaps that remain in place and that need attention and need to be taken care of from different roles and require a specific input in order to close these gaps? Well, good afternoon. I would like to rate, uh, the, um, my gratitude for being here and especially to thank all the members of the panels that have preceded me for Cuba and the Cubans. The use and implementation of digital technologies is not just a technological choice, but it is an adaptation and a show of resilience in face of the big challenges that the country faces because of external reasons and also in an effort characterized by deliberate, um, actions driven by the country's goal, uh, purpose of improving the lives of the citizens. We are talking about the policies for the digital agenda, the digital transformation and the AI, um, areas and also the, uh, access to internet and the mobile phone services. A matter that has been discussed by its ex-colleagues throughout these meetings. And also the different programs that have been fostered by the Ministry of Communications and other ministries in, in the country as well as other agencies that are aimed at empowering the use of technology. There is indeed a drive from the government perspective to support these processes, but also in a context where new companies, uh, both private and public have merged developing technologies and solving solutions, bringing solutions and solving problems, trying to make the lives of citizens better and trying to get citizens, um, somehow better appreciate and use these technologies. And using the existing technologies and the ones to come. So, um, it comes to mind, um, Telegram, for example. It was, it emerged, uh, for a purpose. And it is not just as part of a social network, but also of to teach and, uh, classrooms and, uh, it's also a communications, um, tool. So it's use the existing technologies for, with a more creative approach to somehow, um, replace those tools that we cannot use for any given reason. Cuban citizens are not passive users. Objects of these technologies would rather use them to solve their concrete problems. That resilience we Cubans have is something that is unique among us and is one of our features. Obviously, there are challenges, the access to global markets, the access to, uh, funding and access to, uh, leading-edge technologies. leading-edge technologies, both in terms of software and hardware is an important challenge. It is indeed something that we face, but we must find different ways to solve it. Regardless of the efforts to grow in terms of mobile phone lines, the technological density is not, is not ideal and the intermittence of, intermediance of the power and the issues we have across the country are also a challenge and the digital gaps, not those of gender. We have proven that there is not a gender issue, but we do have digital gaps in Cuba. And we have an aging population in Cuba that must be taken care of and which, whose needs need to be taken care of. So an important number of the children in our classrooms are more connected to technology than the older generations and it is another challenge, another issue that we must tackle. So we, despite of the fact that we are a highly educated nation, we must also determine what is actual accurate information and what is bogus or what could be a fake news. So is also the ability to work in line on all the different public services that can be obtained through digital means to foster the use of these technologies and this is another important challenges, challenge not just for the technology enablers, but also for the citizens that are the end-users of these technologies. These are things that we must address and we can target. So in terms of the challenges, we must be innovative. This is why the question to when I'm representing academia always addressing the challenges and the area of innovation. What value does academia give to innovation in this spaces, in this environment of digital transformation and the challenges that this live and this digital agenda entails? And how can academia balance this with the regulatory framework? And the regulatory issues that have been discussed as part of this forum? How can we innovate and regulate? And establish some sort of a balance between innovation and regulation? What are the challenges? What can we do about this matter? Good afternoon, everyone. Once again, thank you for this invitation. It is actually a very interesting question, especially in a context where the regulators are here, the people with the innovation here. So how can we make this work? I will try to give an experience-based answer. And we must foster, we must push for innovation and it is part of our mandate and the digital transformation policies. And we try to innovate at all times. That is part of what the revolution has inculcated in us. In contrast with the regulation, innovation versus regulations. So as the deputy minister said, we cannot allow regulations to stop or hinder the ability of the innovations of future. So you must find ways to try solutions and see what these solutions can do to improve, to solve problems. You have to regulate knowing what the outcome will be, what the results could be. At times when innovation projects start, we don't even have a test bed to determine what, what the results of the no processes are. So you need to build a project, you need to have results and from those results, you need to know what is to be generated and what regulations are to serve the betterment of that process and the impact in society. And find ways to make these regulations more dynamic. It happens today with the innovation with and the fact that the technological development is taking a very fast-paced, let's say. So it is making us, it's forcing us to somehow try to keep tabs on the new laws. At times the laws come just way after the technologies are in place and they cannot actually match their speed. So you must innovate, you must experiment. And from that result, you can start thinking how to regulate. That could be a way we can explore. With panels with such high level, we must think about challenging questions for this occasion that is somehow closing this forum. And now I will talk, I will request Wilfredo's inputs. Naisa mentioned a platform that has been an important development just recently, a couple of, a few days ago only. And it's a platform that creates a lot of hope. And from the government perspective, it's a platform that will have a very important impact for the agenda and for the regular common citizen in Cuba. It is one of the challenges that we can boost and we can showcase in this scenario. What is a priority with this new platform, with the platform sovereignty? What are the results, the expected impact? What is incidence in the compliance and fulfillment of the agenda? Well, thank you very much for the question. The project represented by Suberania, which was incubated about two years ago. So it is a platform on informational services and it's called Sovereignty, Suberania. So it takes us back to the history of the revolution and the resistance, the resilience to build capacity to have domestic IT platforms and sovereignty is a result of a legal framework somehow promoted by the government policies after decree law 370. There is a chapter that addresses the development of digital government, government in Cuba. And there is a total coincidence in terms of the development of this product. And it is supported with a decree law 125 signed by the Prime Minister of Cuba with the approval of all ministers in the nation approving the creation of the new digital government center and the new informational services platform and the nation called Sovereignty. So this platform, that is, I believe it is, there is a screenshot of the platform. And it is a project or a driving project as part of the digital agenda in Cuba. And conceives of different initiatives to foster digital transformation in the island. So sovereignty is a solution that apart from providing information on government management and action centers is designed 100% on the citizen. And it's his and her environment and has more than 290 opportunities to solve issues and it has 100% digital framework. Making the principles of digital government in Cuba match an exit of a product that is not exclusive, but has high levels of integration, interoperability and achieves a set of principles that are taken into consideration, including the digital identity of the citizen. And sovereignty has been able to develop a digital identity provider for the citizen once recognized in that digital environment. Can actually achieve a better interaction with the government. And when I talk about a better interaction with the government, we're talking about services online that are now available. And the first have to do with the civil registry that is under the Ministry of Justice. There is a sample of it. All the different certificates that can be obtained. And also online identity areas regarding ID card, driver's license that can be requested, retrieved by the citizen. So in that line of work, in that logic, this platform builds a digital space for a citizen in Cuba. It builds a digital profile for the citizens in Cuba and handles another concept. There is a platform that must be somehow promoted with the use of data. So it is an input of the citizens and somehow is in connection with the government so that we can actually have digital documents in sovereignty. And the use of these data can enable a true simplification of processes so that we no longer have to be jumping from one institution to another to get a paper or certificate or document. Now we are getting new information, we are retrieving information, there has been an update and the citizens can actually without, can use these information. So with my consent, I can make this information available so that the processes can be certified. There is a connectivity among the different institutions in the government to serve the citizens. It's a platform that apart from having a digital identity and is data-driven with the relevant consent of citizens, can open forums, online consultations, polls, surveys. So I believe it is a tool that can enable digital government in Cuba and is requires a common effort since it provides space to every single person and that is the main role of sovereignty. So it is a driver of digital transformation in the country across the board, involving all the relevant agencies and bodies in Cuba and all citizens as well. And in this regard, the question is for Naisa, how civil society in Cuba, since the inception of the policy and even before, has been involved in the support to the goals and challenges of the policy? So maybe you can mention some examples of the involvement of the civil society to accompany the government in this task of making the policy effective and fulfilling the agenda, the digital agenda in Cuba. Well, we could be talking about two lead examples. One will be just mentioned briefly, since it has already been addressed by my colleagues here. In these last couple of weeks, there was a summer crusade where different activities were carried out to explain the responsible use of AI and different provinces in Cuba and Guantanamo, Santiago de Cuba, San Luis Obispo, Tucayen Fuegos. It was a journey across the country led by the Cuban Guild of IT Specialists with the group, with the work of the academia, the citizens, promoting the exchange among the different actors of the Cuban society in the responsible use of the artificial intelligence and the involvement of all these factors and all these sectors. And I think it is an example of what Eileen asked. Another clear example, upon a request by the Ministry of Communication, the Cuban IT Specialist Guild requested a strategy for the public administration transformation. It is methodology designed by the members of the organization as an inclusive organization with the participation of academics, researchers, businesspeople from the private and public sector. So it is shaped and has membership of many different citizens across the nation building on the wealth and knowledge of all this knowledge. So there is the result of the design that will enable the central state administration agencies to have a digital record of the digital identity of persons, processes, human resources, the opportunities for improvement of these organizations earned through the use of digital technologies, a roadmap on digital transformation and a strategy that can add the AI tools and will take into consideration the Cuban digital agenda axis. But the ability of not just having the availability of this multidisciplinary team to implement that methodology, allowing to have an external look to these organizations, showing how things can be improved. We have conceived these methodologies upon a request and it has been part of the need of contributing to better use technologies across society and it is a great opportunity and as a part of the civil society. So someone was asking to use one word to define data governance. And Anila said that she was going to be destructive. Something came up to mind and it was said that it will enable us to build the space of dialogue across different sectors, enabling different stakeholders, academia, private citizens, public and private companies work together in the digital transformation strategy that our nation requires, both in the government at the central level, at the provincial level and at the municipal level. So in the case of the province of Camahue, there has been a lot of work with the different agencies at that particular province with the strategies of the digital transformation at the local level. So it is not just central government, it's also the territories, provinces, localities. Thank you, Naisa. And so I dare to destructively promote or propose and also as a member of the organization to say that we are in the position to share with the Caribbean this methodology of sharing with the Caribbean, the lessons learned in accompanying the different ministries, agencies of government of these kind of consulting services to build each nation's own strategy for digital transformation. We are willing and ready to share with our Caribbean brothers and sisters our experience so that we can work together in this process. The last question having to do with this exercise that we have been discussing, what is, what are the lessons learned, what has been the involvement of academia, what is the participation of the different bodies and agencies and which are the main results we have obtained as a result of this?
I was talking about an intention, governmental intention, and I think that in this case is an example because is supported by the Ministry of Communications. So this ministry was the one who called a team where it wasn't only made up by officials of the ministry, but also it involved other actors such as academia. So this work team was created by different sectors. And we started working in these tasks. Now, we are working Now, we are working with 14 organizations and we have been working all over the year. And in the first stage, we were carrying out initial diagnosis to identify the processes involved and also the services that could be provided to citizens. So we were looking that in every organizations, we could find all these processes. So we carry out a survey to identify the services. You have to identify where the priorities are. And we had to make some priority here and we started doing this, started working with students. Because we're not talking about only from academia and the civil society, but our students must be involved in this as well. So in pre-professional training and practices, students must work at the ministries. And then they have to carry out these diagnoses to find out the mentors. And also they have to pay attention to the organizations, they are going to have a mentor. The Ministry of Communications elaborated a software for them to use it. And also teamwork was created that was working in every organization and we started getting results. And I think that we have to highlight that that we were working every night at the ministry. And it was very hard, but now we get the results. And I have to stress that something is very important and that is collaboration, teamwork. How the ministries were able to understand the need of external consultation. That they have to open their arms to new students. And that students have a different way of thinking because we are, we always do the things in the same way, but students have another way of thinking. And they provide solutions that we didn't have. So we have to involve students in these teams and this has been positive. Collaboration. Thanks to the Minister of Communications, when we created this team, we have get very good results through this multidisciplinary work team. And now we have a representation from different organizations. And we have moved forward in this digital transformation of those organizations that belong to the state. We haven't completed this tag, but now in September, we go again to the ministries and work there. And this is an experience that can be shared because everybody must be involved. Everybody's contributed to transform digitally, not only their organizations. And also everything we do has to benefit the civil society. And also technology must benefit our citizens. This is the end of the panel and it has allowed to exchange what we have been able to do with innovation, with the work of others, institutions también. Because we would like to boost digital transformation in our country. And we have to show and share our experiences and this position to share with our Caribbean brothers, all the lessons we have learned in this difficult path to digital transformation. Do you have any question, comment? So I would like to share a little bit more of the experiences that Cuba had had in the last decades to boost this digital transformation that is from the top to the bottom. And also from the bottom to the top. We have shared that for this social change, socialization and cultural exchange regarding technologies. And for the most vulnerable population or the aging population is that the young clubs of computer sciences and other institutions created something that has become something beautiful. Is that from the neighborhoods, the streets with deputies, governors, we have been working with them in a specific way, in the use of all these technologies. So they can use it, they can have access to it, they can have access to different apps such as TransferMobil. And all the people who live here know that there has been a very significant, significant transformation in the use of e-commerce through the two platforms we have. That has been supported by the government. But with this support, we have been able to do this within the civil society. And also we were able to find other organizations of the civil society. And they are involved in this and they participate in this cultural change that we are having today. I just wanted to say this because it continues to be a way to show how Cuba has been working on these issues from the bottom to the top and from the top to the bottom. Thank you very much. This transformation has been dynamic, a round of applause for her. Can somebody else who like to make a comment or share their experiences? Someone from the Caribbean? So thank you very much and round of applause for the panelists. We have been talking about important issues that is not only related to the work that our country has been doing, but also the Caribbean. We are talking about sovereignty that must be implemented in our country, but we have to share this concept and this philosophy with the whole Caribbean area. Because this is something that has characterized us all. Now, we have to also personalize all of this. Taking into account two main principles of the government. Trust and transparency. So round of applause for the panelists. And another element that is important is are two words that has characterized all this forum. Innovation and creativity, two concepts that are key in the objectives for the development of 2030 agenda. And there is a day dedicated to creativity and innovation. That is why we do not stop creating in Cuba, in the Caribbean area. That is why before closing this session, I would like to talk about an event, I would like to invite you. The whole ministry is going to open your, its arm. Informatica 2026 is opening its arm for next year. So this event is going to mark the continuity of the people who are seated here today.
Informatica 2026, organized by the Ministry of Communications, the Business Group of IT and Communications and the Cuban Computer Scientists Union. From March 24th to 27th at the Convention Center in Havana, of Exposed Fairgrounds. 20th International Convention and Fair Informatica 2026. Digital Transformation for Sustainable Development.
This is another space to keep on transforming. So you have the doors of your house open so you can come here. So we wait for you. Now I will want to invite to close this ceremony to Ernesto Rodriguez Hernandez, Deputy Minister, Deputy First Minister of Communications of Cuba, that is going to make the closing remarks of this session.
Myla Arrez, Minister of Communications of the Republic of Cuba, esteemed Mr. Taylor, General Secretary, all the Caribbean Communications Union friends. First of all, I would like to thank the panelists and participants for their active cooperation and valuable contributions in this special session on the digital transformation in Cuba. The debates and reflections that were shared here show the commitment by our country with technological progress and digital inclusion as tools for development, technological sovereignty and social well-being. This meeting has reaffirmed the importance of multi-sectoral and regional collaboration to face common challenges and avail our opportunities from digital transformation. With the willingness and the effort of all of us, we will continue building Cuba and the Caribbean that are more connected, innovative and just. We hope that what we have shared in this session has been of use to all Caribbean nations. And that it may contribute to strengthen their own digital transformation processes. We thank you for your attendance, both in presence and virtual and for your interest. You can count on Cuba. Let us work together for a more digital, more inclusive and more empowered Caribbean with technologies for the benefits of its peoples. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Deputy Minister, for this call to action. Now, after all these calls and reflections, we must do and do and do to be able to change. So now we invite you to a recess of about 15 minutes. And when we come back, we will continue with our work, work agenda with our dear Terry, who has joined us already. A good hand to all of us and let's see you again.